Roll call, please.
Steve Bishop.
Present.
George Hansen.
Here.
Dick Peterson is out.
Terry Doughty. I'm here.
Crystal Harland.
Here.
Jay Duross.
Yep.
Marcus Lucin.
Here.
Review and acceptance of the minutes from April 5th, 2022.
Motion to be accepted as drafted.
Second. Second.
Yeah. Got caught in my throat, didn't it?
All in favor?
Did you guys approve last month? Didn't even notice that I had the wrong month written at the top.
I did, no.
November 21st. And I went to post it online, I'm like, oh dear, I've never fixed that before I post any.
Alright, everybody double check everyone's work. Chair report, none. Code enforcement officers' report.
Not really much to report at this moment.
Nothing new.
We've got a question about something.
Nothing new and exciting coming down the pike?
Still waiting on a subdivision here.
More on coal oceans? Have they been making any noise since, like?
They said we break ground in the spring and first day of summer is June 21st, so I figured.
I have a question. What things that Bucksport has that makes us energy efficient? Like the solar farm that's coming, right? There's one coming or is in the process. What other things do we have?
In what, like?
Like something like that.
For a resident or just a general?
Just in general, for people, yeah, like for people that are coming into the town that want to know, like, you know, how green we are.
I mean, we've got solar on the town road and solar at the treatment plant. And we've got this solar farm coming in.
Now, will that, is that going to just sell back to the grid and then help Bucksport provide energy for what, Main Street or something, or?
There's no... Yes, it goes back to the grid and anybody who wants to buy into that can contact them and get credits and lower your power bill. It will lower the supply side. It won't lower the... The...
Delivery.
Delivery fees. I mean, those are what they are.
Yeah.
But your kilowatts per hour price will be like, I don't know what it is now. It was 13 cents and it would be like nine if you were getting it from the solar. But who knows what it is now.
Yeah.
Okay. Limited public forum and opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport.
Nobody's interested in what we do anymore.
But do we? Nobody's here. The phone's not ringing, so we will close that. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Administrative business, continued review of the marijuana language in the appendix K land use ordinance. We discussed that at length the last time that we met and we tabled that issue for some thought processes. Where did we land?
I haven't typed up like a new ordinance or anything, so what I've got in front of you is... The first document, they're still in order, should be the definitions that we have in our current ordinance for the retail marijuana, the various things. And then on the second page, the medical marijuana dispensary and growing facility. The next document I have is from the state of Maine's marijuana laws. It's the definitions. And I get that there's a bunch of stuff in here that may not apply or that we don't need, but as you can see, I think the retail is completely removed. And then there's the registered dispensary is in here, but there is nothing in the states, there is no term called dispensary. So... Before I get into those other documents, I guess, we had discussed that the starting point would be to up the R ordinance with the proper definitions to match the state. So that, well, so that it matches, but also so that it's clear to people what we're trying to say in our ordinance. Because right now, we're calling stuff retail marijuana and that's not a definition anymore that exists. No, there's nothing that says retail at all. So retail marijuana is now adult use marijuana, which is at the top of the first page there. But you'll also see that it's just adult use marijuana, adult use marijuana product, but there's nothing about adult use cultivation facility. There's just cultivation facility. And I don't know that it distinguishes between medical or recreational or adult use. It just says cultivation means, you know, purchase marijuana plants and seeds and... Well, it does say to sell adult use. Alright, so I guess that is adult use then.
And they can sell plants and other seeds too?
A cultivation facility can. I don't believe cultivation facilities are allowed. We call them retail, what do we call them? Retail marijuana cultivation facility.
Those are the ones where there's actually only eight of those licensed in the state, correct?
That's the dispensary.
That's the dispensary.
And that is... Well, that is, I printed that for you. The registered dispensary law. And it explained, because there was no way for me to do justice, try to explain it to you. What they consider a registered dispensary. And I get that that's almost like seven pages, but some of it isn't really pertinent, but if you breeze through that, it will give you the idea of what that is versus what I think ours is intending to be, which is the, I think it's just called it marijuana store. Means a facility licensed under this chapter to purchase adult use marijuana and mature marijuana plants. So we need a medical, adult use. So is it a caregiver store?
And they get technical, don't they?
Maybe the medical stuff just isn't in this list of definitions.
But did we see anything that would keep us from, was there anything in the state set of definitions that we do not want to adopt for our ordinances?
I think the way to look at it is just, is there stuff that we want to specifically not allow or specifically allow? And then if we are, then I need to define what those things are. So I don't think we need to get into, like, some of the stuff they have in here about flowering and stuff like that. I think that's more...
If somebody wished to come into Bucksport and open a registered dispensary, they already have to get a license from the state? Do they get the, or do they get the okay from the town in order to get the license from the state?
They have to get a license from the state. And then our ordinance, this is where I was saying last month, is kind of, because we use the term dispensary, but we didn't mean a registered dispensary. We meant a store that sells medical marijuana and he called it a dispensary.
What if somebody wanted to build a big greenhouse up where the, some of the old mill that's not been sold? Because it's nice and bright and sunny and, you know, it's a perfect area to grow and there's lots of water and...
We have...
Is that, I mean, where does that go?
Somewhere, is it under?
It's on 20-14. Well, in terms of definitions.
I'm looking for the table of land uses.
We had talked about eliminating, taking Main Street off the table and making it for the C1 district only, correct?
We did.
Yeah.
I asked about 15 people. I don't, was it on scientific in a general sense, what are you, what's your feeling? Just like to see, almost everybody sort of agreed with what we had to say, I mean, a variety of adults.
Yeah.
You know, people I work with, people I went to church with, or just, well, you know, I was walking around. And most of them felt, you know, that area that we identified, maybe it was out of town, is what they said, but not generally in it. But it's a small sample, albeit, but almost everyone, I couldn't think of anybody who said, yeah, it would be great to have right downtown. Not one of them said that, so.
Right.
You know, but that, like I said, it was just in a very kind of general sense. I mean, what would you feel if there were recreational marijuana stores downtown? Some of them said if it's, you know, not right in the key business district. I think it was, on the town map, I think that's what they, or exactly how they talked about it, but that would be right by the dock.
Yeah.
You know, if it was up by...
If you're up by toesures, you're not considered part of the Main Street?
Yeah, but for example, one of them said, like, the old, the old bank brick building up, you know, by, close to the mill or something would be a, they thought I would, they'd be fine with it there.
Right.
But most of them just... Correct.
Village.
That's right. If, that was the consensus I got.
The problem with that is that there's no...
I think that would be up for debate, sir.
The problem with that is that there's the zoning for, like, Main Street is downtown zoning. So, I mean, I guess you could say from this street on or something like that, there are some things that, where we do limit, like... Like the Main Street level has to be commercial between certain streets, you know, and that kind of thing. So, I mean, you could do that, but it's... I guess it's doable.
So would it be easier to just propose that we would propose that the ordinance would be allowed in the C1 district only?
Well, it's certainly easier, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to...
So...
If you wanted to do it down on the far end of Main Street, you could do that and put a caveat in there that it's only allowed in the downtown district on Main Street between this street to this street.
But even though there's so many churches and schools and playgrounds and parks on that side, that it still has to be?
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything about churches, it's just schools.
Outside of, yeah, I was thinking of the church school on...
Yes.
Reach?
No.
No, no, just evangel, evangel.
Yeah.
It should be Baptist, I don't know, it's, it's a new name, but...
But anyway. So that's what was discouraging me from the downtown.
Well, plus, there is reach too.
I was going to say, reach is over, close to the mill.
Actually, somebody approached me about a spot and when I measured it, it was well within the 500 feet of reach, so.
The...
Well, Chris Pepin has some land for sale down there on...
I mean, now, when you say C1, you've got Park Street out there, which we, you know, just has been connected to... Yeah, so is that too, I mean, parts of that might be too close to a school, or no?
Well, I mean, way up at the top maybe, but no, by Family Dollar is way beyond 500 feet.
Okay, so I mean, if somebody wanted to build a...
You certainly could, but what you're going to find is that most of them want to be on the main drag. They don't want to be up on a side street or whatever. They want to have a sign and get the drive-by traffic on US Route 1, so.
Yeah, but couldn't, you could still put a sign down, no, or?
Not really, if it's not their property, there's...
You mean like the ma, big sign, like Family Dollar has?
Correct.
That would just put like a medical marijuana sign on there?
They could get the DOT ones.
You can do the DOT ones probably, but, but they wouldn't be able to put just a freestanding sign because it's not their property. Not unless they made some type of agreement with Family Dollar where Family Dollar just rents whoever owns that lot, you know. And it's feasible, but that's certainly not something I can tell them they can do, that they have to make a agreement with.
So what are our thoughts on the, on limiting it to the C1 district only?
I would be in favor of that.
Well, the only problem is that, that's, any traffic coming out of town, you get them turning away from the village. If we restricted all the, you know, all the customers that are getting there are going out of town. And I thought the impetus has been for years to turn left at the bridge and go downtown and walk Main Street. So my thought is if you had a dispensary or some sort of facility down, or where the laundromat is, down that way, it's not in the Main Street hub, but it's at least in the direction it would take and pull people through.
If they knew this area. If they knew it was there. I mean, part of like going up on, was it Park Street? Part, you go up on Park Street, they still have to rely on a DOT sign. And I, I mean, I haven't ridden Route 1 in a while, so I don't know how many dispensaries or retail stores there are coming up.
They're everywhere.
You know what I mean? They might have already stocked up by the time they, you know, pull up across the bridge of Verona. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you have a good point about wanting people to turn left. That's always been the thing, but we're trying to get tourists to turn left and visit our town, and I don't think people that are necessarily just going to get...
Well, they just passed one.
Yeah, I mean, are they going to turn left for that and then stay?
Well, I don't know. Tourists probably like whatever they sell too, as much as we do.
Maybe.
They might.
I don't know. Maybe.
So what if you said from, like, I don't know where the zone, where that changes, if it, because I'm assuming by, that's still the village. Right, up by Seaboard and up through there, through the town site, that's all, see, village?
Address wise for the state.
But zoned and village?
Village is from Franklin Street up. Down, downtown is from Franklin Street down to the river. That's the actual...
So what goes from Franklin Street down towards Seaboard?
Downtown.
That's downtown. Could you just say from a certain street, or does it have to be a zone?
Oh, you could do that. You could say from this street to this street. I think you want it to be on Main Street, though. I don't think you want it to be up on Third Street or First Street or something, do you?
But I mean, if it was like from Seaboard to River Road, off River Road or something like that?
Somebody had suggested that, like, where Huckleberry is now located would have been like a good place, right? It's on Main Street, it's up. It's not where people really walk to necessarily, put innocent parking there. That was one, I forget, I might have an Andy, I don't remember.
Let's hold Route 15. Is that, is that a concern because the police would be too far away or?
Where's the official cutoff where Main Street ends and River Road begins?
I think it, the...
The Basilittle Power Plant right there?
The Methodist Church is 3 River Road.
Okay.
And Seaboard has an address of Main Street, 170 something Main Street.
Yeah, so probably Franklin Street, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it's right there at that intersection is where River Road starts.
See, I, I personally would be very comfortable in keeping it to C1 and then Route 15 north of the area you're talking about. Route 15, not Main Street, River Road, I guess I should say. I would be comfortable with either one. I just don't think Main Street.
So is there a concern? I know originally they were trying to keep it close to the police department. Are we worried about them being...
I think that's, yeah, last year's thinking, personally. I, I don't think they, that's...
Yeah, that's like 10 years ago.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was last, last decade's thinking and not this thing. That's just my, my thought on it.
Yeah. I think we should definitely get Sean and Dave to...
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I agree.
Went too far with that.
Well, I think wherever it goes, they're probably just tell the guys and ladies if they are working to patrol that area.
Now, when we're talking about this, we're talking strictly medical marijuana sales, like a store. That's it. Now, I have no, I, I believe that that one, Verona, sells like edibles and stuff too. Is that something that, you know, that we need to define, or is that just a...
I don't think we need...
Given that it's, that's allowed if you allow it?
But, yeah, I agree, yeah, and I would think that if we're gonna, we can just adopt what the state language for the ordinance and we could adopt whatever their regulations are. We don't need to come up with anything special.
Somewhere in here it talks about how much...
Does allow for edibles and menopausal.
Oh, yeah.
I, what's wrong with that?
Yeah.
You know, I...
Well, I don't think, I wasn't saying there wasn't any...
No, I, I...
I was just saying I didn't know if we needed to...
Limit it?
No, include it as something that's allowed or not allowed, but I didn't know if it was just included in the... So if we say you can have a medical marijuana store, is that included, or is that something we have to call out?
Right, and then, and if we adopted the state definition, then it would all be by, I would say by state definition, it would be fine.
And somewhere in here.
In my opinion.
It says how much you can sell per 15 days or something. It said...
Yeah, it was right on the...
Two and a half ounces.
Yeah, for 15 days or...
Yeah, yeah, section 24, 28. Yeah, two and a half ounces, 15 day period right there.
Yeah, so I mean...
Yeah, and that's all.
Is that a lot?
I don't know. Is that a lot?
It doesn't sound like very much.
Two and a half ounces, ah, that's, that's got to be what, probably 60 grams, 70 grams. That certainly falls within personal consumption.
But is that dry or wet? You know what I mean? So here we go.
No, but, well, I think that's all spelled out too, but...
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I don't, is that like 10 joints? Is that like, I don't know.
It would fall within personal consumption. Now, you could probably make, I'm going, I'm going backwards, okay, one more day. Yeah, you, you could make 10 joints of two and a half ounces.
Well, how much do they, somebody that needs it for medical reasons, really needs it, how much do they use?
Well, I don't know. Do they, I don't know. Do they smoke a joint a day? Do they smoke a quarter of it? I, I don't know.
It's all a variable. We've seen it all, and who knows?
I just didn't, to me, two and a half ounces seems so small. I mean, it can't have these 12 ounces, you know?
Right.
Two and a half ounces is not a large amount. Not a large amount.
Just to me, we're not educated enough to even know this.
I know, right? I mean, I know anything about...
I think Jay would agree with me in the course of our former professions, that we learned just enough to know that we don't know anything.
That was reinforced about your day.
Right.
What I read, the, back in the day, like, there's a lot more THC in, like, modern, yeah, right? So it's like 12 ounces of beer, nothing, 12 ounces of whiskey, that's a lot, you know what I mean? So it's sort of like that difference, I guess? So it's a lot more potent.
New marijuana, the THC content of marijuana, today's marijuana is probably 10 times more than it was back in the 70s and 80s.
So maybe you need less, I guess? I don't know.
Ah, well, depends on what you need it for in the first place.
Yes, or want it for.
But I really appreciate your statement that we don't know enough, which is why I'm leaning towards we need to just adopt the state standard and run with it. Uh, what else?
Oh, so you, one of you was asking a minute ago about where the cultivation facilities, so cultivation facilities are not allowed anywhere in Bucksport right now. Growing facilities are allowed in C3, which is the industrial park. And Route 15 residential commercial. And that has a note that says this use is limited to lots with frontage on the River Road. It must be located within four miles from the beginning of the River Road. So again, I think they were trying to keep it as close to town so that the police could get there quickly. That's the only thing I can think of as to why they would do that.
And I think all that's fine if we now just excluded the Main Street village area.
So there'd be no problem in using, someone wanted to buy up some of the old mill site right in the river, put up a greenhouse and start growing, but not cultivating?
Yeah, well, so the difference, because to me that seems like the same thing, but it's not evidently.
No, because it's all, like, if they're growing, it's the industrial side of it. Not, not having a storefront with people going back and forth and stopping in all the time.
Right, that's, they, they would be trucks taking product.
Cultivation facilities licensed under this chapter to purchase marijuana plants and seeds.
They do both up there on Verona.
To cultivate, prepare and package adult use marijuana, to sell used marijuana product manufacturing facility.
Also there's retail.
So basically, they're like a wholesale distributor to marijuana stores. That's what a cultivation facility is.
Oh, so growers.
So what is the, what is Verona considered? Is that a cultivation, or is that...
Remember that Orinol, Verona, never opted in, okay? That guy got in under the radar before the opt-in laws. When he contacted me about the greenhouse, he never, he called me up one day and said, hey, do I need a permit for a greenhouse? And I said, no, agricultural uses don't require a permit. He didn't tell me what the greenhouse was for. So, you know, if anybody on Verona called me up and wanted to put a greenhouse up to grow tomatoes or whatever, I, no, no permits needed. Whereas they do need a permit over there for a shed or a garage or whatever, but not for a greenhouse. For whatever reason, agricultural stuff is typically exempted. It's the same in Orland. So I just told him, no, you don't need a permit for a greenhouse. A few months later, I drive by and it's wall-to-wall lights and all nine yards and...
But what would that be considered? What would that fall under?
I would consider that a growing facility, but I also believe he cultivates. Because he processes his own stuff and sells it, as well as other people's stuff that he buys and resells. So he does both.
Does he sell any of his?
Oh, yeah.
He does.
Oh, yeah. He's got some real nice grow rooms up in it.
See, to me, that's the difference between growing and cult, cultivation is he's growing for his store. My idea of growing is that you are supplying more than one facility. That, that would be my take on, on what growing is.
So if it was like potatoes, you're just shipping out raw potatoes. If it's cultivation, you'd be shipping out french fries and you'd be, like, modifying the product?
I don't know if I could describe it in that way, but I just, I... Is he growing for himself or is he growing for others? If he's, if he's doing it just for his business, it's a cultivation facility.
Prepare, package for sale. So I mean, cultivation, to me, it sounds like it's, like you said, it's like taking up potatoes, turning them into french fries, getting them ready.
Adding value to the basic product as opposed to just shipping out the basic product.
And they sort of... Anything large scale would be great for the industrial park area, if, something like that, larger greenhouses.
I mean, if somebody want, I don't know, that's like a bad thing, if they were just growing and shipping out and not, you know. That's, that's probably a good area to do that. There's a lot of sunlight, there's a lot of water there, there's, I mean...
A lot of patrol checks, all of it.
So what they do is they do cultivation and then they do cultivation facility. That's what the state has. In cultivation, it says, drying, curing, grading, trimming and other processing of marijuana for use or sale does not include manufacturing, testing or marijuana extraction. It's so confusing.
Oh, well, you, this definition of what a cultivation facility is, to sell marijuana plants and seeds to other cultivation facilities. And immature marijuana plants and seeds in marijuana stores. So my idea of cultivation is not the same as the state's idea of cultivation.
So, and we had retail marijuana, manufacturing facilities were not allowed. So, and we had retail marijuana, manufacturing facilities were not allowed. Which is adult use. We don't, I don't wanna say we don't, I don't think we have anything in here about medical marijuana growing.
I guess my question just is like, are you gonna end up having, so C one is, there's a, I mean. Where were we just done? Cross from McDonald.
Oh, C three?
No.
The C one, oh, the road, Park Street.
No, the one we were, look at the house on. Cross from McDonald.
Cross McDonald, oh, Bayview.
Bayview. If you put a grow, if you were growing up there like that, you would smell that. You would smell it at the nursing home. Or not nursing home, but the facility that's there for the elderly.
Well, if you were just going to Shortwood, cause it's not, that's not that far away.
No, that's what I'm saying. So if, like, are you talking about growing it or are you just talking about a place to sell? Things to smoke it with and different types of edibles and different packaging and different things like that? Or are you talking about, like, that?
Well, when we said C one, we were talking specifically store.
Yep.
Selling, not growing. When, what we have right now as far as growing, it's allowed on Route fifteen and it's allowed in C three.
Which is the industrial park.
Which is the industrial park. But the same thing could be said. I mean, I've had complaints about smells about C two over the years. So, I mean, we could run into the same issue where that is wafting.
But that's where those places go.
Right.
That's where that all goes, is to the industrial park for that.
I guess my thing is just like, the wording, the verbiage should specify that if it's gonna be in C one, it should be like a retail store, only non-growing. Attached to it with.
I think it does say that now.
Yeah, so you.
Updated definition.
But could you have, could you grow your own to provide for your business? I guess that's my question. Like, if you are cultivating your own to then sell, you're still growing. And if you're like, well, I gotta grow twenty plants or how, I don't know, I have no idea how many plants you need to.
He's growing.
How many plants does he have? Okay.
He's growing outdoors on one side of the road and he's got indoor grow rooms on the other side of the road. The indoor grow rooms, I don't think you smell a thing. You wouldn't even know they were there if I hadn't just told you. The outdoor ones are the ones that stink. And I talked to him about finding another location to do that.
We should do a site visit over there, something, something.
Well.
Growing.
I can tell you, it's about the time of year where you're gonna smell it all over the road.
Just walk by somebody and you'll smell it.
He grew over a project, this giant hemp farm over there. There's all kinds of people that were pulling up and going over and cutting the plants.
If you call it hemp, it's different.
Well, that was different. Cause the hemp is, uh, male plants, I think, or something.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Half-bun smoking that. It's, it's not, you may grow.
All right, well, we've also gotta talk about Airbnb tonight. So it's safe to say that in regards to this, that we are very interested in not having any of the specified marijuana facilities on Main Street or in the Village District. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's also correct that we are interested in adopting the state's definitions as our own to update our ordinances. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. So I would make a motion that we push this through to the council.
Well, no, no, no. I have to write something first and then you guys have to review it.
We will review it before you go through? Okay, all right. Well, then we'll do that then.
So our current language, retail marijuana cultivation facility, if you took the word retail off, right, I mean, that would almost.
I'll have to make sure that the definition is the same intent as the other one and yes.
That would almost be in line and, I mean, the only other definitions there, like retail marijuana social club, I mean, are we, can we have that anywhere?
No, it's not allowed. It's in our ordinance just to tell people it's not allowed.
But that would, but that would just be as the marijuana, I mean, you could probably take the word retail out of there.
The social club?
It's, no, it's in our ordinance just to tell people that it's not allowed. We put it in there just to tell you, you can't.
Well, because it was a thing that the state, it was a thing that was in the state's, um, definitions back in the day.
Yeah.
But it's, it's no longer even a thing, I don't think. I don't think they're allowed anywhere in the city.
State of me, I don't, I don't.
So I think therefore we could probably take that out. Just cause it's not needed, it's not allowed. Also, the way the ordinance was explained to me when I took over was if it's not in the ordinance, it's not allowed.
So, so that could go retail marijuana social club?
Right. Social club would go.
Testing facility?
Well, that's another one of those things that I don't know why we would have a problem with that if it was in the right location, like the industrial park.
Right.
Would that hurt? And I, and I don't have an opinion one way or the other, I just am asking the question.
The, so the only one there is essentially what you said, retail, I see retail marijuana store be recreational. Right, we, I'm not, like, we're not talking about Islamic recreational, just.
You mean adult use?
Yes, adult use.
Um, I, I don't care, but I, I got the impression from you folks that you, you were not on board with it. To me, it's, half the people that have a medical card are only using it for recreational purposes anyway, so what's the difference? And from what the dealers have told me, most of them would rather sell medical because it's not regulated as much and therefore it's cheaper. So evidently if you are, um, going to buy this stuff, you're gonna find that it's much more expensive if you're buying it adult use versus if you have a medical card.
Okay, so all we're going to allow are medical.
That's all that's allowed now.
Right.
Do we care about adult use?
I don't know. It seems not that hard. I mean. Probably anybody that's really interested or inclined could, you know, get a script for it, I would imagine.
Agreed.
Maybe not, I don't, I haven't tried.
I don't care either.
Right, agreed, indifferent. Um, is there anything else we want Luke to add into that?
Well, I guess I need more. How do you actually feel about adult use? Like, indifferent doesn't help me. I need to know, do you want that included or not included?
Right now, it is.
Not allowed.
Not allowed. And it doesn't seem to be that large of a demand for it to be beneficial for anything on the business front. Because the business end of things, it's better if you go the medical route.
At this point.
Right.
Who knows though? I mean, hopefully they wanna rewrite this in two years and people are coming to us and want to do it.
Right.
So, and I'm, again, I don't care, but if, if we all are sitting here going, doesn't matter to me one way or the other, then why not just allow?
Right.
If there's no reason not to, do we, is there a reason not to?
I don't see one.
Are we concerned about kids or something getting access to it? I mean, I don't think they'd have any more access than they would with the medical. They're still not supposed to be in the store, but, I mean, what are your thoughts?
Whoever's gonna try to make a go of it is gonna have to come before us.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess that would be the time to, yeah, your name. That's what I would think.
Well, remember that once the ordinance is written, our job is just to say whether they meet the requirements or not.
Okay.
We can't say, well, yeah, you meet the requirements, but we decided today we don't want adult use.
Right.
If it says in our ordinance that we allow it, then we have to allow it, as long as they meet the requirements. So.
What about other towns our size? Do you know if they have differentiated between adult use and medical or not?
Um, some have. Uh, Rockland has allowed it. Brewer and Bangor allow it.
Yep.
It hasn't come up in the small towns, so Orland, Verona.
No.
Well, I know Verona wouldn't allow it. Orland, I think, would do whatever the voters, they'd leave it up to them.
Okay.
Right now, as far as I know, they only, in Hancock County, the only recreational or adult use store is in Southwest Harbor.
Yeah.
But in Penobscot County, they're all over the place.
Okay.
So it's.
Well, I would say that we should allow it. That would be my opinion if we just allowed it, cause that's, you're talking about not rewriting it in two years. And the progression of the way things are headed.
It seems that way to me, but, I mean, if people have a valid reason why we shouldn't allow it.
I'm just so very confused.
Actually, what I'm told is that the recreation is more, more, they're more strict with the licensing and the inspections and stuff.
So kids can use it?
No, it's about the price, it's about the price and how you get it.
I consider it like, um, I have a gun store, so, I'm a class one dealer. A class three dealer is allowed to sell silencers and fully automatic weapons and things like that. Well, a class three dealer is much more monitored.
Regulated.
Regulated, inspected because of what they're selling. So it's the same type of thing. Medical is, yes, they're monitored and inspected, but. Recreational is really monitored and inspected and the licenses cost more and.
So I guess that's what's wrong with that, having more inspections and more regulations.
Right.
Right, I agree. And it's also a, a broader net.
To get people to come to the area. If you're going to South, driving all the way to Southwest Harbor.
Right.
I think you drive to Brewer.
Yeah, for us, it'd be, yeah, you'd just go up to Bangor, but.
Yeah.
Well, right, but if you're from.
If you're in Ellsworth, yeah.
Right, or if you're.
You might be driving to Southwest Harbor or something.
In Belfast.
Do we wanna get those people from Ellsworth driving out here for the day? I don't know. I mean, it's, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Maybe they'll stop and grab an ice cream or some munchies. We should open a Wicked Munchies or something.
Yeah.
Like a candy store or something.
I don't see.
Cause they have to use here to get to the benefit of the appetizer.
Based on the information in hand, I don't see any reason why we would exclude that. We're, it's all around us anyway.
If it's more regulated, I guess I don't.
And, I mean, the council, we'll have public hearings and the council may disagree with us, but is there anybody here that has any reason why we shouldn't allow it?
No, I really don't have a reason why.
Okay. Doesn't mean anybody's ever gonna apply to win it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'll try and have something written up for next month.
Okay. Very good.
I've been trying to figure out some way though where we can make money on it.
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to.
I know.
Add a tax or anything like that. There's really no benefit to the town other than, you know, if they build a store or something, you get the real estate, the property taxes or that kind of thing, like any other store, but.
I mean, it'd all be a cash crop, just like.
We don't get anything, we don't get anything from Irving when they sell gas. We don't get anything from, you know, Hannover when they sell potatoes.
Or they don't sell toilet paper.
Right, right.
So I guess it's the same.
Yeah.
You know, or alcohol, we don't get anything from the stores that sell alcohol.
All right, well, we'll close that and move on to, uh, B, continued review of Airbnb regulation in town. What have our thoughts evolved to on that?
I don't, obviously, I don't have any handouts or anything prepared. Um, I learned a lot last, last week, especially from Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I did too. I, I knew next to nothing about Airbnbs. It was rather enlightening, guys.
Do you, I mean? No, it's, um, I don't know. They're there. I mean, I know some houses that are sitting there empty, but I also, that's like, not the only houses sitting there kind of empty until this, you know, season picks up and then.
Right.
That, that's, I mean, if you're gonna control them, I mean, like, we talked about a hundred and fifty dollar fee and inspection every year, which I think all makes sense. Some of the Airbnb owners with whom I spoke about, that was completely reasonable. Um, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars if they would be willing to, um, you know, pay that fee annually. Especially if it came to an inspection, because you have to pay for inspection for insurance.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's, there's a cost to that. I mean, to get them insured properly.
One of the things that I thought about over the last few weeks was, you know, an annual inspection might be too much for me to try and keep up with if there's a lot of these, cause I'm already struggling to try and keep up with the inspections of all the restaurants and stores and stuff that I'm supposed to inspect every year. So I was almost wondering if maybe like a biannual or, or something, you know?
I agree with that.
Um, you know, it's, you know. It, you know, it's interesting when the Spring Fountain said, well, you guys are picking on us. You know, you inspect us all the time. And I'm like, well, no, I, I'm inspecting you because you're in violation and I'm coming to see if you fix the violations or not. You know, the reason that I don't inspect the other hotels in town is because when I do inspect them, they're either up to code or if there's some situation, they fix it. And I don't have to keep going back there over and over and over. So, um, it would be same, you know, same thing with, with something like this. If everything's good, then I don't see any reason why I need to check it over and over and over. But obviously, if they're not compliant, then, then I'm not just gonna say, well, you're not compliant and I'll see you in three years, you know, or something, whatever.
Right, yeah. So it could, so it's gonna create not only more of a workload, but it could open the door for more of a workload.
Well, I don't think we're gonna find a lot of non-compliant. I mean, I'm sure there's some that'll be missing, so the smoke detector or whatever.
I was gonna say, maybe there's, the initial inspection is your fault, I'll take fault on you, but it becomes your, 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 um, priority. But then, like, maybe somebody from Public Safety, uh, to go out and do, I don't know, or the follow-ups every few years or something like that, so it doesn't all wind up on you.
And in a perfect world, I a hundred percent agree with that.
Unfortunately, they're just as busy or busier.
That, that whole building situation is stretched so thin that it's, there's a, there's a.
We need help that up there.
For years, there was a talk of doing pre-plants on buildings.
Well, they're still trying to do that. I'm, keep telling them, yeah, I think it's a great idea, but it's too much.
It is.
You're too thin already.
Right.
If they could get more staff, then I think it's a great idea. I mean, they've got great intentions.
Yeah.
Could we sub out? Is there somebody, a building inspector? I mean, I know you can, you know, for real estate purchases and such, there are people that do that.
Uh, you could require a third-party inspection.
That, I mean, that, that's.
That's gonna cost them, and I don't know how much a third-party inspector would charge, but it's probably.
It's like four hundred and seventy-five dollars for a home inspection.
How much is that? Five hundred bucks depending upon.
Just under five hundred dollars for a home inspection.
And all that.
Wouldn't be anywhere near as detailed as that.
And all that stuff is so booked up, that.
Yeah.
That would slow down business.
Yeah, that's not my, my, my goal here is not to regulate these people to death or make, you know, burden them, just to make sure that it's being.
Safe.
Safe and.
Wait, which is, could be done with, you know, somebody who, I mean, somebody could be trained for that. I mean, they, they could, I don't hire someone, I, it, it doesn't have to be that thorough of an inspection, right, dude? Not, not.
This is true. Going and say this water heater's gonna go in five years. I mean, that's not, that's not the purpose of, of this. This is, we're looking for safety.
Exits.
So Mike, I guess my question too is like, when you had to get your insurance, did you have to have it inspected every year to keep your insurance? Or did, what did they require in order to get the insurance covered? Do you know?
I don't remember, but I know we had used, we had to do some upgrades, had to use licensed contractors and then every, like, we had to sign off on whatever we had done. We had, for example, people out there, like, five, six years ago, some kind of October windstorm, we had guests out there, then we'd lose power. You know, it's like if you're not downtown, you lose power for a week. And we had people there, so we had to, like, pay to put them up, um, one of the hotels in town because our, our house was not habitable, so we put in a standby generator. And all that work had to be, you know, signed off and inspected, that, you know, so that was, as we did each succeeding piece.
I think that's what would be bad if you change or something like that.
Yeah, right, yeah. So we did, uh, make sure that it was installed properly, that somebody was gonna set the house on fire if the standby generator.
So that, like, that is the law. You know, you're not supposed to do your own plumbing or your own electric work and things like that unless it's your own, um, you know, permanent dwelling. Unfortunately, I know that there are landlords out there that, that do do their own, um, and if you don't catch them, you know? So that's one of those things where if you see stuff that's done shoddy or whatnot when you're doing the inspections, that's where you could catch these safety issues, but. You know, since, just since our last meeting, I've learned of a couple more in town that, that didn't know existed.
Airbnbs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um.
And I'm not even looking for them. These are just ones that I was told about and I was just like, oh, okay, I didn't know that, so.
I, I think having a handle on how many there are, and I think that's good. Um, I, you know, who, um, some idea of what percentage of our housing, especially in the village. People like coming to this village. They, they love that it's walkable. They love to see, you know, people to go to places. You know, and the waterfront's beautiful and even walking the streets. I mean, they, that's an experience that people don't have in a lot of the United States, even a lot of Maine. I mean, think about, like, where's, where are you walking downtown Brewer? I mean, they, that's an experience that people don't have in a lot of the United States, even a lot of Maine. I mean, think about, like, where's, where you walking downtown Brewer? I don't know, it just feels like traffic to me. Or, you know, Winterport has a little bit of a village, but Handen, not really, you know? Frankfurt, a little bit of a village, but there's really not too much there.
Yeah.
Searsport, I guess you could walk it. Belfast has that, but you get outside of there, a lot of, I mean, a lot of towns prospect where you walk. So people kind of orientate where you walk, right? That's kind of a desirable community, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, so, but what we have is something that people really enjoy, and they like to vacation here for that, and they, so it makes sense. I have, my, I have neighbors across the street, just, they live in their house, they live in Louisiana, because relatively, you know, you look at the price comparison, what they pay around New Orleans and what they pay here, like, they bought a, essentially a summer home that's unlived in. I mean, they're taking care of it, they're, you know, fixing it up, but it's really essentially vacant. It could be sold to some local folks, you know, it's just, we're in that place where there's a great value here for a lot of bang for your buck in the houses in Buxport, and it's a pretty place. And they, they, they love, I mean, they absolutely love coming up here, but their business, they work, you know, in Louisiana. So, but that helps contribute, they're not running out of Airbnb, they just don't live here. They pay their taxes, keep their property up.
So I think keeping it simple, if they do want to do something like that, is important, so doing something like maybe every other year.
Or the location, we just want to say, you need to have, you need to have a permit and you need to have inspections.
Yeah.
And the twenty-five dollar one-time, good forever type thing is.
That's the one that.
No, it, it makes sense.
I agree.
And then, probably some fee, if some people knowingly, you know, you send a letter out to their house, we hear, we, we, this is, I can see the listing here. I'm looking at on Airbnb and you haven't paid the fee. I mean, if, if someone's listing on the site, you can pretty much, like, search for, I'd like to stay in Buxport, and we'll show you all the Airbnbs in Buxport. And then you can just cross-reference, did you pay the fee? Did pay the fee, send the letter out, you know, and you, you have a penalty, we'll accrue or something, do, this is your warning.
It's not completely that easy, because they don't put the addresses on there, so you have to.
Yeah.
Figure out whose house it is.
The enforcement on your end for it being a negative thing, if they didn't do it, would be too much to chase, but.
But sometimes just having it there.
Now for twenty-five dollars, it's just not worth my time.
Maybe just having it there as like, if you don't, this is a fee that will, if you're, you know, I mean, sometimes just that is enough for people to go, you know, it's not worth that. It's not worth taking a chance to just simply pay this every other year, have somebody come in here, make sure my place is safe, it also, and then if we did give them bonuses.
So.
Make a pamphlet or something.
Hundred and fifty dollars a year. How many Airbnbs do we have, in your estimation?
Twenty-five to thirty-five, somewhere in there.
Let's say it's thirty.
That I don't know.
Add up, thirty times a hundred and fifty a year, how much money is that bringing? Is that enough to hire somebody to do some inspections? So thirty times two hundred, but that's like forty-five hundred dollars a year, it's not really a loss.
No, and there's, you know, then there's the other things that we, you know, there's the taxes, you know, employment tax, all that stuff that the town has to pay if you hire somebody.
Is there some certification to be an inspector?
Oh, yeah.
So they've got, this is, you know, you just can't, like, take some guy who used to work in the mill, retired, looking for a little job, and, here's a checklist.
You know, and they have to go through a lot of training, and, I mean, it can be done, obviously, but, yeah. Now, I was thinking, as, as I approach retirement, if, you know, I, I could do that job, inspect thirty places in here, it'd be enough.
I think the fire inspector in one and two class, last time I took it, was, was it two months, Jay? It was a bunch of weekends over two months?
It's, uh, it's.
You, did you do that? Did you ever do the fire inspector, or the fire instructor? No, I think it was a couple months, but anyway, yeah, it's doable, but not immediate.
It doesn't seem though that we ought to be not developing some ordinance for Airbnbs, just because it's going to be a workload. I mean, somebody is going to be responsible down the road somewhere, and it may be us for not having it in place with the inspections and all of that. I went online, looked at, uh, spent five minutes looking at Airbnb regulations in Maine, and there's several small communities, uh, towns that have them already, which we can look at for example. Uh, but at a minimum, they've got annual inspections, annual fee, there's each owner of the one's properties have to have them registered with the town, so you know how many units there are in town and where they are.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but that's kind of the minimal stuff that, uh, is in the.
At least from a public safety standpoint, how many people are in that building, right? That's, there's, there's, how, what's the maximum number of people? Then one of the problems we had, we'd take up to eight, but then people would like, oh, I have my brother-in-law come with his six kids, you know, and a couple times I went out there, and like, why are there fifteen people in here? It would have, if I had, if there was like town code, you can't have more than eight, that makes it more than like, you're, you're overtaxing like the water, the sewer system, you're over, you know what I mean, or, or whatever I said, this is against town ordinance.
Right, and it was very based on the location, obviously. Some places might be two people and some places might be eight, and so.
In Portland, it's kind of, well, I mean, they're, they're.
Yeah, I bet. Because in the, in like a big, in Bangor.
People on staff.
Bangor will not allow them. There are some.
I've looked, because you said that, Bangor, there's, they're all over the place in Bangor.
There, and that's what he said to me, and I was only trying to do, like, Airbnb upstairs in an apartment for thinking like traveling nursing or something like that. And he was like, yeah, no, we don't allow it.
Could we assess a local lodging tax for Airbnb? I have no idea.
Why did, you know, why Bangor doesn't though?
He didn't tell me why. I assumed it was because of the hotels and different things like that, and just regulations, and, you know, how do you?
I read something about that, and it was, um, just the housing.
Kind of need more housing, yeah.
Yeah.
Everywhere may need more housing.
Yeah, it just creates kind of a housing crunch for locals, for, you know, people that.
Rental, people want to do Airbnb rather than.
Because you make a lot more money.
Right, and it doesn't take as toll as much, it's not much of a risk, but.
The housing thing, there's so many things going on with that. I mean, out of state, there's a movement here, it's just droves.
But are they staying all year? Are they contributing to the community? Are they doing like my neighbors?
Oh, but they're buying up the houses itself.
They are buying up the houses.
There's, there's one house I was looking at today.
Yes, they are.
They listed it Saturday, on Sunday they had seven offers. I, I, that's crazy. And they're, you know, it went, it's, it's, in my mind, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it went for half a million, you know, and it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I assume there wasn't a surcharge, you could all, you could, you know, you're not going to live there.
Uh, I don't even know where to start.
Multiplier.
But anyway, yeah.
The River Road house had over seventeen offers on it.
Which one? The one I did on or the other one?
Oh, you mean up by the town line there? Yeah, yeah.
That had over seventeen offers.
My wife called it the very greedy house.
Yeah, but I told him we should just go up and talk to the neighbors and see if they want to sell.
Yeah, same house right across the street.
Like, it looks like, because I literally thought it was that house, so when we were headed here, I was like, oh, we'll take it right, oh, no, it's this one.
Right, not the same house, just on the other side. But the, uh, if that's, if that is the case, then do we just want to be like Bangor and just drop it and say, no, can't do it, then we don't have to deal with any of it?
Well, they're still going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, my next question with that is what form of liability would we assume by endorsing it? Would, if we did endorse it, would we have to do the inspection like we do the hotels? I wonder if that's Bangor's end, there's a liability end to things.
I could certainly call Bangor.
Call them and ask them why.
But.
I'd be curious.
I mean, then you're, there's a lot of people like Mark was saying, that, that are, that make money on there, some of them are retired people, it's not, they're banking on that money.
Yeah.
So if I went and said, you can't do this anymore.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess my thing is kind of like.
I would really put the screws to some people, I would hate to do that.
Well, if they're not going to use the house and it's going to sit there vacant, and that brings up a whole bunch of other things that could happen to them.
But if they're paying the taxes on it, they own it, they can do whatever they want.
All right, just.
Right, which is, why, why should we tell them what they can and can't do with it?
Right.
I mean, what's the difference, to me, what is the difference between them renting it out for a year and having a lease?
Yeah.
A year lease, what is the liability? What are we, how can, is there something that says you can have your property as a rental? Is there anything that the town requires for that?
We have, um, no, I don't think there's anything that says you can't rent your house, you know, the whole house as a, if you're doing it on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, then we do do the recreational lodging, just like an Airbnb. But we don't, if it's just like for, by the year.
Yeah, or if it's a multi-unit, if it has more than one dwelling?
Multi-units are supposed to get inspected and everything.
So more than two or what? Oh, so three.
Multi-family, yeah.
Yeah. I guess that's my thing, would be, what's the difference realistically with the liability aspect?
And then my other curveball to all this, because I keep going back and forth on all of it, is if I own one of the motels in town and I get inspected and I'm licensed, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
And then everyone else can just, because I have people that do the same thing on my side of the business, they don't pay or go through any of the regulations or anything I do. And they just get to have it, keep the profit. How do I feel about that, if I own one of the motels in town? How do I feel about the Airbnb end of life?
Well, we learned from Mark that they are paying their lodging taxes and stuff, so they're not paying the, the innkeeper's license, but that's, that's another fee that's a joke.
Is it?
And it's like.
Well, they're paying the lodging taxes, no one knows about it?
That's also like three bucks every, every other year or something.
Or the insurance. I tell you what, I know that, you know, the insurance on the, on the motels and hotels are going to be more expensive than a private residence.
That's a cost to do a business.
If, if you, if your insurance company doesn't know you're running an Airbnb that's, or using that for lodging, then that'd be, you know, a claim from somebody, they're not going to pay, right? So you, you rented your, the insurance doesn't know. I mean, you'd have to lie to your insurance company, so if you get it above board, you, you.
Insurance company's still going to be on the hook.
Well, we took, I mean, we, we took a, like, a renter's insurance, or a, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Rental property, you know, so I, we did everything above board and, you know.
Right, which, which you should do, but I don't know what would happen if.
But that's a rabbit hole, because I mean, there's mortgage regulations that some different types of mortgages say you can't use your property as rental, it has to be your primary residency. And people do whatever they want to do after, you know what I mean? It's just kind of like a rabbit hole you can go down and say.
If, if I insured your pro, I'm an insurance company, I insured your property, and I found out you were, like, running people in and out, don't, not using the gas stove, the, you know, the pellet stove or whatever in your house, you know? I would have a reason to say you weren't truthful on this, I'm not going to pay.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I mean, we never wanted to take that risk, so, I don't, um.
Where's the money in it for the town?
I, I don't think that there's.
At the end of the day.
I don't think at the end of the day, my job is meant to, you know, money-making jobs, it's meant to keep people safe and.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Well, keeping people coming here makes money. And on the safety end of it, I like where we're headed with the inspection direction, that keeps things safe if it's going to happen. And every two years is reasonable. That's great. I think that's really the most.
So let them come, or let them do them, and there's no limit on the number or whatever of the location, but they have to have a, a license and a bi-annual inspection or something along those lines.
I mean, it'd be great that, if there was some certified occupant, max occupancy.
Well, that could be part of the inspection.
Right.
I could, you know, make them put that rate, you know, you go in a hotel room and it says.
Yeah.
Max occupancy of the room.
Right.
Yes.
Make them put that by the door.
Yeah. Yeah.
Most of them are two, whatever thing I was reading.
And they have to have a toilet.
Don't get me started.
That's why I said it, when you said that some don't have toilets.
Yeah.
Yurts. It's a big thing. People want to rent a treehouse, so they want to rent a yurt. It's the experience. Is that place in, on the way to Belfast, that has all those yurts you can go stay in, that just opened up like a couple of years ago?
I've had people that want to put up their.
Probably, I would assume we're a pickle bucket, maybe.
I've had people that wanted to build mud huts.
Yeah.
I thought they were teasing me, they weren't. They wanted to build a house out of mud.
I sold a piece of land in.
Straw bale, a person applied for a house for a straw bale house last year.
Well, those, the, that's just like the inside of straw bale and then.
Let me a little comfy, continue, I've been doing like framing, I don't know, or some, just like stuff or something. It was like chicken wire and straw. Yeah, it was, it was a big negative for me.
Yeah, well, it's not holding it in.
What I said was, if you could show me engineered documents that say that it needs the wind loads and the snow loads for the, for this climate zone, then we can talk, and I never heard back from them.
I was talking to some, I sold a piece of land to somebody that came to me and told me about these hemp logs, and I think it's made of hemp and clay, and they're like fire resistant and all these things, and they were going to make them. That's what they were going to put down. It was like clay and hemp to make bricks.
I don't know.
I was like, hey, you know, whatever.
Like I said, if you could.
It was like this whole chemical process.
Codes, then.
Yeah.
Custom materials, we'll be seeing all kinds of creative things going on pretty soon.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, but the thing is, you start asking them questions, well, what are you going to do for plumbing? Well, I'm not going to have plumbing. What are you going to go to? Well, I'm just going to compost it in buckets and then use it to grow my vegetables and plant again, you know.
And heat my house and.
That's, that doesn't work so good.
No.
I rented a house with only a cleaver's molder when I first moved to Maine, um, and just, um, not, I wouldn't recommend whatever was down there, we wanted to eat whatever. I just write that on.
Oh, gosh.
There was no flush toilet there, it was too close to the water. Anyway.
Need any more of a conclusion from us?
I don't think so. I'll probably have some stuff ready for next meeting, but it is crazy busy right now, so.
Okay, all right. On to the discussion, we got the training next week.
I am.
On the, is it the tenth?
On the tenth.
So a week from, yeah, a week from tonight.
And I've got.
May.
And.
May.
Two, anybody else?
I will be in a Roostie County.
Yeah.
Going to Granny's.
There's four from Orland that are going, so.
Okay.
So four from Orland and two from here.
Okay, and it's from four to eight?
Four to eight thirty.
Four to eight thirty.
Training is actually four thirty to eight, or your registration starts at four.
Okay.
Do we have to go and register, or are we going to be registered?
Well, you'll be registered, I think you just go and sign and you get a tag and whatever.
Name tag with a sticker.
We're going to get a name tag.
Yeah. Okay.
Doing a meal?
Not, I don't know.
That's what they used to do when we used to go to a.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, we'd have a dinner meal and then we'd have the meeting and.
Every event needs its draw.
What's that?
Every event needs its draw.
I won't be hungry, I'll be even more, I'm going to tell you.
I don't know, we.
All right, anything else?
Saw that last year, didn't we? We spent time, something, in the school, does it here? Yeah, my God. I don't go through it, we don't want to go through that again.
That's pretty dry, but it was different when it's not in person, I mean, because I've been to them in person and they're better than that, so.
Anything else?
Just going to heat.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?